Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Lambert, Chairman of the Board, and I would like to call to order our first East Whiteland Township Supervisor Meeting of 2024. Can we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
As we begin a new year, I would like to introduce our attendees. At this table, to my right, is Township Manager Steve Brown, Vice Chair Rich Orlo, Supervisor Peter Fixler, and our Solicitor Bernadette Kearney. Directly in front of me at the table is John Matea, our Zoning Officer, Catherine Ricardo, our Assistant Manager, and Zach Barner, Director of Planning and Development. And across from them is our Chief of Police, Chris Jaeger, Donna Whitekirk, Operations Manager and a person who is running the Zoom meeting, in case you want to know. In our audience, we have John Yield, our DPW Guru, Greg Lewis, Fire Chief, and Larry Anako.
Otzio.
Ot- Katyo.
Otzio.
One day, I'll get it. Our New Parks Director. And Al. Al, our Engineer.
And Bron.
Bron Taylor, a Solicitor as well. So I think we've got everybody covered at this point in time. Just a couple decorum points as we start the year off. The meeting is being recorded, and each resident will have an opportunity to comment after each agenda item that is discussed by the staff and the Board of Supervisors. And non-agenda items can be brought up during the Public Comments section for a three-minute period. We will ask you to offer your address and your name. Moving on now to tonight's agenda. Our executive sessions were held on January 10th at 4:30, and we discussed some real estate, personnel, and legal issues as well. 2B on our list is Catherine Ricardo to give us an update on our grant application updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one update for this evening. Please to announce that the township applied today, actually, for a $5 million RACP grant for assistance toward construction of a new police building. This is a roughly $12.5 million project, so $5 million would go a long way if we're successful in that.
Thank you. We were actually having a discussion about the grant program that we've kind of initiated in 2023. And I understand, and I'll ask Bernadette, I'll put her on the spot, since you work with a little number of townships, how are we in terms of the number of grants versus some of the other townships that are out throughout the county?
I thi- I think you have a higher number of grants than most of the municipalities that I'm aware of. So you're doing well.
Okay. And we will continue to look at opportunities to save the residents' money through grant activity. Next, if we can get a bit of an update on a slow subject of the moment, Steve Brown on the sewer sale.
Thank you, Scott. While we wait to hear from the Supreme Court as to whether they'll be willing to take our appeal or not, we are starting to work on contingency planning, both internally and externally, in the event that the system will, would revert back to the township. That's, that's really it. We're, we're, again, primarily in a waiting period at this point.
Zach Barner, if you can give us an update on the public workshop planned on the upcoming zoning ordinance changes?
Sure. So we started, we kind of kicked this process off last year. We have a consultant on board now to help analyze and, I'll say, make modifications to our zoning ordinance for the entire township. We will be having a public workshop, the first of a handful of workshops and other public outreach initiatives, on January 30th, beginning at 6:30 PM here at the Township Building. There'll be a survey that accompanies that process that'll be issued in the coming weeks.
Any questions? Steve, can you give us some details on the announcement that we've already put out on our website, but pertaining to the Bishop Tube upcoming meeting?
Sure. On the heels of the January 30th meeting that Zach just mentioned, there'll be another public meeting here in the building at 7:00. This one will be at 7:00 PM to discuss the Bishop Tube property. This, we're intending it to be an open question-and-answer period, where township staff and the Board will be there, as well as BSTI, our environmental consultant, and our solicitors will be present either in the room or on Zoom. I do want to note, it's like most of our Board meetings, it's a hybrid meeting, so there's a Zoom option. We do ask that if people know they're going to attend, just to submit their questions and maybe topics for discussion ahead of time, simply so we can be prepared. But if they don't know, or just show up that evening, or don't want to submit things ahead of time, that's fine, too. We'll, you know, everyone's welcome, and we'll take whatever questions and comments that, that people have. It just, some, we may not be prepared to answer, so we ask that people submit them in advance.
Are there any questions on Zoom? Audience? You're welcome. Moving on pertains to Mr. Orlo's resignation. Steve Brown, can you give us that information?
Yeah, let's be clear. He's not resigning as a supervisor. Let's get that under, out in the open, and if he tries, let's not allow that. Mr. Orlo was also voted in in the recent general election to be on the Board of Auditors, which there are three elected auditors in townships of the second class, in townships like East Whiteland that rely on a CPA firm to do the audit. The Board of Auditors is a bit like your appendix. It doesn't really do much. And so Mr. Orlo, as I understand it, intends to tender his resignation this evening, which the Board will receive.
Very well put, Steve. I deeply regret that I must resign from the Board of Elected Auditors. And I will submit the writing by the end of the meeting. Okay?
Rich, you, you really did a great, great job. You know, good stuff. Being a CPA, you really nailed it.
Let me just add that, yeah, next month, the Board will act on the resignation, and then will work to fill the vacancy.
So I'll make a motion that we tender a decision on Mr. Orlo's elected auditor resignation letter till February. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will also add, I guess your popularity has increased in the township because you ended up getting two write-in votes as well for supervisor position. Catherine, I guess if you can give us a little bit of a overview here on the Natural Lands Open Space Proposal?
This proposal is for consulting services through Natural Lands for the township to consider taking a more active role in open space preservation in the township. So Natural Lands is proposing a four-pronged approach to doing that, which includes the formation of a township committee, which will work on a Conservation Opportunities Map, as it's being called, which will work to have special public meetings to address this topic and solicit input from all residents and interested landowners, and then also contacting those landowners directly to work with them. And this would help the Board in evaluating whether or not this is an initiative that's worthy of moving forward should the number of open space parcels that are available be something that we'd like to consider. And this may also culminate in a referendum on the ballot for an open space tax to help fund this initiative. And so, of course, that's something that'll continue to be discussed should the Board move forward over the course of this year, because that would take place during the general election later this year.
Okay, thank you. I'll add that the open space referendum is something that most current municipalities have on the books. We do not have that, and at this point in time, I can tell you that there's strong interest by all three Board members to, to pursue this so that it gives us the opportunity. As opportunities arise, it gives us a little more flexibility to maneuver, hopefully, the acquisition of some of these properties. Any thoughts, comments?
Nope. Just curious if anybody in the audience has a question about a potential open space tax.
Okay. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the Natural Lands Open Space Proposal not to exceed $10,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to add, Lib, just a second here. I wanted to mention something. Recognized two gentlemen that are in the audience. Not too long ago, there was a sinkhole that occurred on Route 29. It was not our road. It's Pendott Road. But John Yield diligently went into the site every morning, gave us a report back, kind of helped facilitate some aspects of that work, and I'd like to thank him and his crew for stepping in and doing some additional work on that. We appreciate that. And as we all know, last night was a horrific night in terms of weather, and the impacts affected the potential of water rescue down poles, trees. And Greg Lewis had a special team put together in the event of any type of water evacuations as we encountered the last previous, I forget which hurricane it was that came through that we ended up having problems. But I know you had seven guys working 24/7 last night, and I know you are probably ready to fall asleep right now. You put in a long day. Thank you. The Board thanks you and your team for watching out for us. All right? Now we move on to the real exciting stuff in the agendas, Planning and Development, and what did I miss? Got it?
This is very exciting.
Well, this is almost as exciting. Catherine, I guess you're up again on the next ordinance?
So this, this is for a request to authorize amendments to the Duty to Connect Ordinance, which, when we talk about duty to connect, it's pertaining to public sewers. So these amendments, in summary, would allow certain exemptions to allow certain properties that meet criteria to delay connection to public sewers. This would apply township-wide wherever public sewers are involved, but it's being taken up now because, as the Board's aware, Aqua's in the process right now of doing a public sewer expansion that was planned for in an area of the township. And so that's why this is before you this evening.
This is another one of those expensive projects that would have incurred a substantial amount of money for the township, that, which is part of the reason why we, we looked at signing the sewer system to Aqua because of their resources and their expertise. But any questions pertaining to that? Peter, or Rich, Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Hey, sir. Question. The, this allows those who have system, onsite systems in good working conditions to delay connecting.
That's correct, for a period of time.
Right. And up until, if they sell their property?
That's right. Yeah, whichever occurs first.
Okay. If they sell their property, I didn't read word for word yet, but does this require the installation before closing of the sale?
Yes.
That's, that, yeah, we might want to look at that part, because that's difficult to have somebody, get a plumber, run the lines, and hold up a settlement. So just something to think about if we want to tweak this at a future date.
So they tweak the language that basically says as part of the sale, but it doesn't have to be done before, it could be done after the sale. Yeah, Catherine and I could talk about that and tweak the language.
Does it make sense to put a timeframe for that to be accomplished?
So there's actually a question on that. Go ahead, Marty. Marty, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. I think he might be having some problems. Marty, do you want to say anything? I'm not sure. He could be having problems. So if he gets on, we'll just let him on.
Yeah, Marty, if you come, if you correct the issue, Donald will bring you back in and ask you a question. This is the situation where previously, when we owned the sewer system, we ended up charging roughly $4,000, correct? And whereas Aqua's, since their involvement, there is no fee.
This doesn't impact any sections related to tapping fees.
No, no tapping fees at all.
This, the amendments do not impact the sections regarding tapping fees in the ordinance.
Okay.
Right, right. And let me just clarify what Catherine, or John, correct me if I'm wrong, but this ordinance exists today. And so the connection requirement is if you're within 150 feet, correct?
Yes, and it does not change those provisions.
Right, so those things don't change. These are provisions to allow exceptions to those, those rigid requirements.
Yeah, currently, the way that the ordinance reads is that there's a section that says, basically, at the authority's discretion, and where you see authority, it's actually referring to the township. And so the, the objective of including these very specific exemptions is to clarify and make very discreet what the requirements would be to meet for exemptions, not just at the discretion of the township.
Okay, great. Now, moving on to our second exciting portion of the program is.
I'm sorry. I think we need a motion on that.
Man, I'll tell you. I'll tell you, I can't, I can't wait to hear, hear Planning and Development. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisements to the amendments to Duty to, Duty to Connect Ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Hit it, Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item here is just an extension of time. This is for the apartment proposal along Route 29. At, so at, let me, I guess let me back up just a moment. The, at the, at last month's meeting, the Board approved the master plan for a redevelopment of a portion of the Corporate Center to include some multifamily and some research and development. The master plan is essentially a sketch which outlines the phasing of the development, traffic improvements, and other sort of generic, I would say overarching, site design aspects. As part of the master plan, each subsequent phase will have to go through land development process, so like the normal process we go through. This item before you tonight is an extension of time to allow additional time for the first phase of land development to undergo reviews and attend meetings and things like that. So I just wanted to clarify how this fits into that larger process. So they are authorizing, we've requested an extension to carry this into the, the May Supervisors Meeting.
Yeah, I certainly don't see any issues with that extension. Peter, Rich, any problems? Don, any questions?
None.
All right. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to authorize the extension of time to render a decision on land development of 5/2023 for the Gray Star Apartments in the Corporate Center until May 8th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes.
The next item, 5B, these are the requests for release of financial security for ongoing or recently completed land developments. The first item, I just want to make sure it's clear on the record, Stone Cliff at Attwater, for various phases, they've requested final release. That item, as noted on the current agenda, has been tabled. So that'll be potentially considered at the February meeting. There'll be no action on that at tonight's meeting. The next item, 5B2, is for the Knickerbocker redevelopment. As part of the financial security for that project, which is now underway, there was financial security posted for certain sewer improvements. As the Board remembers, there's a number of conditions related to sewers and triggers and things like that for installation of sanitary sewer facilities. What's, what's before you tonight is just a request to release the bonds associated with Phases 1 and 2. That security will now be posted with Aqua. Given the state of the sewer sale, we had requested that the developer post security with the township, just given some of the uncertainty with the status of the sale. Aqua has now requested that that security be posted with them. So we will be releasing the security that was previously posted to us. We can't, they can't, we can't require them to do both, and I think we're, we're perfectly comfortable with that at this time. So it would just be a, a motion to release financial security for the sewer improvements for Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Any questions?
I should, I should just add, I'm sorry, there is a resolution that goes along with this. There are certain conditions that sort of spell out some hypotheticals. If the sale were to be overturned, if the sewer system was to be reverted, the developer would have to post security with the township. So the opposite maneuver is what we're doing here tonight.
Is that documentation something that we need to call, vote on, Bernadette?
Just the.
Is, is the, the further description that was made by Zach, does that need to be called as a motion to accept those terms?
The way the resolution is written is if they, Toll provides us with any information that.
Right.
Aqua's no longer holding the financial security, they let us know, and then we'll bring it back to you.
Just the agenda does not reference a resolution in the minutes here in the agenda items? It only talks about the release of the money.
Oh, yes, it's set forth in the resolution.
Yeah, we'll just make the motion subject to the conditions outlined in the resolution. I apologize for the confusion there.
Okay. Rich, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to authorize the release of the financial security for Phase 1 and 2 for the Knickerbocker redevelopment, subject to the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is passed.
I'm going to ask Marty, I'm going to ask Marty one more time if he wants to say something. His hand's been up, but I... Oh, he just said, for some reason, his audio's not working. He wanted to ask how the proposed sewer, sewer ordinance applies to large properties, like 10-plus acres.
So the only, the only changes that are being proposed in this ordinance pertain to exemption criteria. And so, as it was mentioned earlier, the current mandatory connection area is still 150 feet from the man. And so that provision is not changing. It's consistent with what's in the code now.
Marty, do you want to type in the chat and let me know if you understood that, or you have any more questions, please?
Okay, then we'll move on.
Yeah, move on. If he does, I'll just see.
John Matea, regarding Item 6?
Under zoning for the month of January, there are no pending zoning hearing board applications, so there will be no meeting. Under code enforcement, the office here continues proactive enforcement of property maintenance issues throughout the township. Follow-ups continue in monitoring of properties in an attempt to achieve voluntary compliance, and a few non-traffic citations have been issued where this could not be achieved. Additionally, this month, the East Whiteland Township Code requ- I'm sorry, this is a standing code that the township has. The East Whiteland Township Code requires that all owners of property in a municipality submit reports to maintain a list of all businesses, units, and dwelling units for properties owned by a landlord, whether occupied or unoccupied. The ordinance further requires that landlords provide the legal address of each unit, listing an address and unit number if applicable. The report also will include contact information for the owner, manager, or other emergency contact information of any responsible parties to the property. It should also include a brief description on the use of each unit and occupant information of each unit. That being said, the report form that is required and a letter of explanation will be distributed with every municipal tax bill, which will be going out shortly in cooperation with our tax collector. And property owners and landlords will be expected to return these completed reports in a timely manner, whereas the code does provide for penalties if noncompliance by the property owners. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Have we sent this letter out in the past ever? I don't remember it ever hearing.
No, Mr. Orlo. The ordinance actually was adopted by us in 1992. It hasn't been, there, there are scattered records of these being enforced. We thought it's about time to try to bring things up and have a database, especially be beneficial to township emergency services for, you know, improved responses to when there are problems and issues of properties.
And when we get to the point of starting a rental inspection system, too, that'll help with that, for sure.
That's, that's correct.
Have you heard any, any information about a potential sale of Fraser Crossing?
I believe there, it may have already been in, in process for them. They've come to us, we've done some inspections out there. They've asked a lot of questions, proposals of doing improvements on the property, a lot of planned improvements, bus stops, fixing up properties, things like that. I know they've been in touch with the codes department for requirements of permits and things like that.
That would trigger some inspections by you folks, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thanks, John. Next on the agenda is public comments. We're open for any comments of three minutes or less. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approve the meeting, once again, I'll read and then you can comment with questions afterwards, but the consent agenda, A, approve the meeting minutes from December 13, 2023, and the January 2nd, 2024 reorganization meeting. B, ratify the payments of bills in the amount of $1,182,899.63 for the month of December 23. Accept the treasurer's report as of November 2023. Approve Resolution Number 15-2024 for the destruction of records. Donna, did you have fun with that? Will you have fun with that? Yes, ma'am, okay. Yeah, yeah. E, ratify the final release of financial security for 514 Lapp Road Office, Builders Incorporated, with the corrected amount of $596,723.90. And finally, approve the Chester County, or Chester Valley Engineers' proposal for a survey of township-owned property at the Bren Aaron Complex not to exceed $10,300. And that's the final item. Any specific questions we need to address?
I have none.
Hearing none. Rich, would, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other questions or items that need to be addressed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.